City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Burris.
Yes.
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Yes.
Alderman Winn.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. The Public Special City Council meeting, public hearings on truth and taxation for the 2012 property tax levy and the public hearing for the fiscal year 2013 proposed budget are now open. First, we will have citizen comment. And first person signed up is Dick Lanyon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning, Members of the City Council, City Manager, City Clerk. Yes, my name is Dick Lanyon. I'm Chair of the Evanston Utilities Commission, and I'm here to support the capital improvement program for the Water and Sewer Fund. The Utilities Commission recommends the City Council approve the proposed fiscal year 2013 capital improvement program for the Water Fund at $7,435,000 and the Sewer Fund at $4,100,000. At our August 10th and our September 14th meetings, the Utilities Commission meeting members reviewed both the proposed fiscal year 2013 capital improvement program and the proposed five-year capital improvement program 2013 to 2017 in regards to those projects managed by the Utilities Department. A detailed explanation of the proposed projects was presented as well as the different funding sources proposed to be utilized. In particular, the Utilities Department is working to secure IEPa low-interest loans for major water and sewer projects in 2013 totaling nearly 4.5 million or 38 percent of the proposed funding. The Commission highly encourages the City Council to continue investing in renewal of the city's aging sewer and water infrastructure. We feel it is extremely important to continue replacing the 100-year-old water mains, rehabilitating the 100-year-old combined sewer system, and maintaining the water plant infrastructure as well as improving treatment processes to remain compliant with state and federal regulatory requirements. This work is needed to continue to provide safe and reliable drinking water and an effectively functioning sewage and stormwater collection system for the 21st century. The Commission supports the staff recommendation to increase the water rates by 3 percent in July 2013, realizing that this rate increase is necessary to provide the necessary funding needed for the proposed capital improvement program. And attached to my letter which has been passed out is a detailed explanation of the two funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next two speakers are on non-agenda topics, are Padma Rao and BK Rao.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. This council could save taxpayers lots of money. First, respect all taxpayers' constitutional rights. This council and mayor appear hell-bent on disenfranchising minorities with apartheid rules worthy of the utmost global contempt. But a federal judge ordered the city to pay over $45,000 in legal fees in the LaSavia case. This council's actions and inactions resulted in at least two more civil rights cases being filed in federal court, namely Davies v. Evanston and DZ by Thompson v. Buell in Evanston. Stop wasting tax dollars on your unconstitutional bigotry. Don't try to blame Chief Eddington when someone follows your example instead of his. My experience is that the chief treats everyone with respect no matter what their skin color, but I cannot say the same for this council and mayor. Second, get competent legal advice. The city accused the keg of wrongdoing, claiming that a prank Twitter account is so-called incontrovertible proof. Perhaps it's incontrovertible proof that whoever advised you to rely upon such worthless hearsay is grossly incompetent, but the result is that the keg filed suit against the city. The taxpayers may wonder how much that lawsuit will cost them. Your Eighth Ward member made her animus against Viola part of the public record at the August 8, 2011 AMPW committee meeting.
Mr. Rao, you're out of order.
So Viola sued the city. It's part of the public record. People can go check the video. The taxpayers may wonder why the city's lawyer, who was present at the committee meeting, did nothing to mitigate this costly hate-mongering by your Eighth Ward member. I submit that a competent lawyer would have acted to spare taxpayers more expensive litigation.
Mr. Rao, that is not part of the public record.
Third, I submit that it's indecent for you to feast on pizza at taxpayers' expense before nearly every meeting when people are struggling just to get by. Pizza is not expensive compared to your overall budget, but it's the principle that you, who can easily pay for your own pizza with little pain, immorally push this cost onto the taxpayers. Knock off the pizza palace next door. Stop wasting tax dollars on your personal vendettas. Spend that money on youth programs so that every child, no matter what their skin color, can reach their full potential in safety. Spend that money on job training and education so our neighbors can afford to pay their taxes and stay in their homes. Pay for your own pizza. Fourth, wake up and smell the property tax coffee. It's well-known that mature trees increase property values by 5 to 20 percent, which results in increased tax revenue. But this council voted to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason at Kendall even though some of those trees are older than Evanston. I submit that dangerous traffic patterns reduce property values and reduce property taxes. But this council voted to dump traffic onto the narrowest street at Kendall with no regard for the lives of the pedestrians in the neighborhood. Your ethics entity's whitewash doesn't change these facts. You have an absolute duty to protect the taxpayers and their money. Protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall. Protect the Kendall trees.
BK Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were reviewed by my attorney. It is interesting that the city still prides itself as being a tree city USA when the council pays no attention to trees. Some of the ash trees, yes, the ash trees, could have been saved if the council paid a little attention to stopping the ash boppers. More trees could be saved if the council pays attention to projects like the Kendall property subdivision, which involves killing 24 mature trees for no reason at all. But the council passed this plan without any discussion, no discussion. Taxpayers may wonder why some of you seem so concerned about the trees at Northwestern when you insist that the trees at Kendall must be killed. Taxpayers may wonder why some of you seem worried about how birds will be affected at Northwestern, but you ignore the birds that live in the Kendall trees. Perhaps this council's motto is, and I quote, "One rule for us and another rule for taxpayers", end quote. Protect the trees at Kendall, which is easier for you and wiser, and it saves money. And it is better you take my advice, and I shall return. I think my voice will be better next time.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak for the public hearing? Seeing no other speakers, the public hearing is closed. Next is truth and taxation for the 2012 property tax levy for the city and the township. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's also a public hearing, so if anyone wishes to speak regarding the truth and taxation hearing, those documents are before you. Would ask that you open the public hearing if there's any speakers. If not, then to close the public hearing.
I believe it's already open, so seeing no speakers, that would close the public hearing. And moving right along. We have public announcements?
I do not.
I do not have public announcements either. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No, we just have.
All right, then, we're at City Council discussion of the proposed budget.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good morning. This morning, we have several things before you. We would propose that we would continue the discussion that you left off with at your last meeting about the budget. We do have one presentation we would like to make. Prior to that, as part of the budget this year, we've included performance measures. The council several months ago talked about the included performance measures. We would just like to spend a few minutes this morning going through the final list of those performance measures with your approval. With the adoption of the budget, those will be the measures we'll use moving forward, and then come back to you periodically with updates on that. Godwin Chen, our local government management fellow, has been working on this project and is here to provide an overview. Godwin, good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Deputy City Clerk Outwell, City Manager Bobowitz. Godwin Chen from the City Manager's Office, and this morning I will be giving an update of the citywide performance measures, which were last brought to council May 21 of this year. I will begin by giving a review and a background of the citywide performance measures and what we're trying to accomplish and what goals we have established, then provide an overview of the changes that have been made since May, and complete this presentation by stating our next steps and taking any questions you may have. The CPMs were developed in following with the City Council's 2012 goal of efficiency and effectiveness of service. We began this process by referring to guidelines from the International City and County Managers' Association, and we kept what worked. But following the request of council and city staff, we also modified or created entirely new measures where we found their measures lacking. And these measures being presented before you will be our first year of reporting on our citywide performance measures. As mentioned before, the initial proposed CPMs were brought to the council on May 21. Suggestions and comments were given by the council during that meeting as well as in individual meetings with staff. City staff responded by proposing new measures in line with those suggestions and submitted them to your review. These proposed measures have been incorporated into the CPM section of the proposed budget being presented to you today. Our goal was to create thoughtful measures that could be presented in a way that would help the council make informed decisions about strategic goals and resource allocation, provide the public with accurate data about the quality and efficiency of services we provide, increase accountability of city staff, and allow for benchmarking of city services against that of other cities. With that said, I will now move on to review the changes made to the CPM since they were last presented. What you see before you is a truncated version of the CPMs that are presented in the proposed budget. These measures are marked on track or not based on mid-year projections. Final figures will be included in the FY13 adopted budget document. Measures that have been modified or added are seen in bold in this presentation. For the City Manager's Office, we removed a measure as requested for the Intergovernmental Affairs Office. The Law Department measures have remained largely unchanged, except that we will now also include a breakdown of successful to unsuccessful prosecutions for traffic prosecutions. In the area of administrative services, we have added measures for employee satisfaction, employee retention, and also parking compliance. Parking compliance will be measured through the number of email and text alert subscribers we have for street cleaning notifications. And for community and economic development, planning and zoning review times have now been modified to include the time that they spend in committee.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes. The previous measures, when we were measuring for the time it took to approve various reviews through community and economic development, they did not include the time that they spent being reviewed by committee as well. But now they also include the time being spent in committee.
So it's added?
So it's added too. That's correct. And a new measure that has been added to community and economic development are the total number of business openings and business closings throughout all of Evanston.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For the Police Department, performance measures now include proactive activities by the problem-solving team as well as the number of complaints made to the Police Department in the Human Services Committee, so two new measures have been added. The Fire Department has added a measure estimating the value of property that has been preserved by firefighting activities. And the Health Department has added two new measures, one for educational outreach for lead poisoning, and second is wait time for pediatric oral care. Two new measures that have been added to the Public Works Department are on-time waste and recycling pickup, percentage of on-time waste and recycling pickup, as well as expenditures for street sweeping per linear mile. And the library will be determining their performance measures through surveys that have yet to be administered, but they are for facility usage for the number of meeting room requests and estimated attendees, so facility usage by the public in libraries, second visits and the number of library program participants that enroll in additional programs, and lastly, outreach effectiveness, which will be gathered through surveys to be administered, asking patrons how they learned about programs available at the library. Parks and Recreation and Community Services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development. The park's recreation and community services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Development.
How birds will be affected at Northwestern. But you ignore the birds that live in the candle trees. Perhaps this council's motto is, and I quote, "One rule for us and another rule for taxpayers." And quote, "Protect the trees at Candle, which is easier for you and wiser, and it saves money." And it is better you take my advice, and I shall return. I think my voice will be better next time.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak for the public hearing? Seeing no other speakers, the public hearing is closed. Next is Truth and Taxation for the 2012 Property Tax Levy for the city and the township. City manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's also a public hearing, so if anyone wishes to speak regarding the Truth and Taxation hearing, those documents are before you. Would ask that you open the public hearing if there's any speakers. If not, then to close the public hearing.
I believe it's already open, so seeing no speakers, that would close the public And moving right along. We have public announcements?
I do not.
I do not have public announcements either. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No, just I.
All right, then we're at city council discussion of the proposed budget.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good morning. This morning, we have several things before you. We would propose that we would continue the discussion that you left off with at your last meeting about the budget. We do have one presentation we would like to make. Prior to that, as part of the budget this year, we've included the performance measures. The council, several months ago, talked about the included performance measures. We would just like to spend a few minutes this morning going through the final list of those performance measures with your approval with the adoption of the budget. Those will be the measures we'll use moving forward, and then come back to you periodically with updates on that. Godwin Chen, our local government management fellow, has been working on this project and is here to provide an overview. Godwin, good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Deputy City Clerk Outwell, City Manager Bobowitz. Godwin Chen from the City Manager's Office, and this morning, I will be giving an update of the citywide performance measures, which were last brought to council May 21 of this year. I will begin by giving a review and a background of the citywide performance measures and what we're trying to accomplish and what goals we have established, then provide an overview of the changes that have been made since May, and complete this presentation by stating our next steps and taking any questions you may have. The CPMs were developed in following with the city council's 2012 goal of efficiency and effectiveness of service. We began this process by referring to guidelines from the International City and County Managers' Association, and we kept what worked. But following the request of council and city staff, we also modified or created entirely new measures where we found their measures lacking. And these measures being presented before you will be our first year of reporting on our citywide performance measures. As mentioned before, the initial proposed CPMs were brought to the council on May 21. Suggestions and comments were given by the council during that meeting, as well as in individual meetings with staff. City staff responded by proposing new measures in line with those suggestions and submitted them to your review. These proposed measures have been incorporated into the CPM section of the proposed budget being presented to you today. Our goal was to create thoughtful measures that could be presented in a way that would help the council make informed decisions about strategic goals and resource allocation, provide the public with accurate data about the quality and efficiency of services we provide, increase accountability of city staff, and allow for benchmarking of city services against that of other cities. With that said, I will now move on to review the changes made to the CPM since they were What you see before you is a truncated version of the CPMs that are presented in the proposed budget. These measures are marked on track or not based on mid-year projections. Final figures will be included in the FY13 adopted budget document. Measures that have been modified or added are seen in bold in this presentation. For the City Manager's Office, we removed a measure as requested for the Intergovernmental The Law Department measures have remained largely unchanged, except that we will now also include a breakdown of successful to unsuccessful prosecutions for traffic prosecutions. In the area of administrative services, we have added measures for employee satisfaction, employee retention, and also parking compliance. Parking compliance will be measured through the number of email and text alert subscribers we have for street cleaning notifications. And for community and economic development, planning and zoning review times have now been modified to include the time that they spend in committee. The previous measures, when we were measuring for the time it took to approve various reviews through community and economic development, they did not include the time that they spent being reviewed by committee as well. But now, they also include the time being spent in committee.
So it's added?
So it's added too. That's correct. And a new measure that has been added to community and economic development are the total number of business openings and business closings throughout all of Evanston.
Thank you.
For the Police Department, performance measures now include proactive activities by the problem-solving team, as well as the number of complaints made to the Police Department in the Human Services Committee. So two new measures have been added. The Fire Department has added a measure estimating the value of property that has been preserved by firefighting activities. And the Health Department has added two new measures, one for educational outreach for lead poisoning, and second is wait time for pediatric oral care. Two new measures that have been added to the Public Works Department are on-time waste and recycling pickup, percentage of on-time waste and recycling pickup, as well as expenditures for street sweeping per linear mile. And the library will be determining their performance measures through surveys that have yet to be administered. But they are for facility usage for the number of meeting room requests and estimated attendees. So facility usage by the public in libraries, second visits and the number of library program participants that enroll in additional programs. And lastly, outreach effectiveness, which will be gathered through surveys to be administered, asking patrons how they learned about programs available at the library. Parks and Recreation and Community Services also has new measures, which you will see in the news slide. The first is park user experience, which will be gathered through surveys, rating facility conditions, safety and cleanliness, and also a measure for the arts, which will be measured through the number of functions added to the Evanston Arts Buzz website. And the Utilities Department performance measures remain unchanged. So moving forward, the next steps for the citywide performance measures are to collect year-end data for the entirety of the current fiscal year and to publish them into the 2013 adopted document. Next, we will begin tracking performance measures for 2013 and also obtain performance measurement information from other municipalities in order to establish benchmarks. And with that said, I will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Godwin.
And Madam Mayor, if I can just add, we appreciate many of you got back. I know Alderman Burris, Alderman Grover, several others worked with Godwin on some of these. It just seemed like this was the appropriate time to bring it back, so obviously, a lot of this work was done several months ago, but appreciate that. And what we'll now do is we'll include this as part of the budget annually, we'll include this as part of the annual report, which we started doing, to be able to share not only the data for Evanston, but also to make comparisons with some appropriate data from other jurisdictions. And I think that's where the ICMA measures come in very handy. While they may not all work for us, for those that are very quantitative in nature, one that struck me was the street sweeping cost per mile. If we can take that information from other communities and compare ourselves there, it won't be many, based on, I think, what these final numbers are, Godwin, if that's correct, with the ICMA measures. But there are several that we can also then share with the community. Because I think the good part about the ICMA process is that they set out what are the measures for, let's say, street sweeping, what things you count, what things you don't count, so that you can get apples to apples. Because oftentimes, if you, if we were just randomly to call up Skokie, Northbrook, Levee, Willmett, and ask them what that measure would be, we would really have no idea of the component costs associated with that. With the ICMA measures, they very much prescriptively say, this is what you include, this is what you don't include. So over time, I think we'll be able to use that. And this is obviously, will always be a living document as well. So as you see things that make sense, don't make sense, we'll continue to make adjustments. But at the end of the day, we want to be transparent with our residents. We want them to understand what these benchmark numbers are. We want them to understand how we compare to other communities, not only in the region, but around the country. And I think that's very valuable for goal-setting, very valuable for budgeting as we move forward. So thank you for your assistance to kind of get to a list that made sense for Evanston. And Mr. Chen, thank you for all your good work on that.
Thank you.
Alderman Burris has a question.
Actually, just a comment. Thank you very much. I know you did a lot of revising on this, and I gave a lot of pushback on the first one, so I really do appreciate it. As Mr. Bobowitz said, I believe it's very helpful when we're talking to residents as well, like, well, what are you doing in the community with our tax dollars? And this really helps to say, we are doing this in the parks, we're doing this in community development, and giving really hard numbers versus just anecdotal. Obviously, we know we're doing so much here in the community, but to have this kind of data is extremely helpful, so I appreciate all your work on it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Chen? Thank you, Godwin.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we handed out to the council, I believe it was on Thursday, and posted on our website for others to see, responses to questions that came up from your last budget meeting. I'd like to spend a few minutes to walk you through that document and then answer any other additional questions that you may have regarding the budget. Starting with the package on page three, there are several documents that reference the discussion on the proposed position for a crisis intervention coordinator to be added to the budget. There is information that I received from the Mental Health Board, there's information from the Health Department, there's information from Sarah Flax with issues regarding the CDBG funding. Yesterday evening, we distributed to you separately a memorandum from the Mental Health Board as an addendum to the information that was previously supplied. As I mentioned in my memorandum that starts all this off, I've heard from at least two other organizations in Evanston who believe that they could be of assistance to us, and I think in reflection and partially from the discussion we had the other evening, my request for the city council would be to remove this $85,000 from the Health Department's budget, shift it to the City Manager's Reserve, allow me to continue to work with Health Department staff, with the Mental Health Board, with other providers that we currently fund, that perhaps are interested in helping us, and come up with a larger solution. I think that the good work that the Mental Health Board does in helping us think about these things is very important. I think many of you also alluded to the larger question of the money that we currently fund to organizations and how we could better leverage those dollars to accomplish city needs and city goals, and I think that is a discussion that is very appropriate. And so with the council's concurrence, would ask that we shift that money aside to do some additional work, have some additional discussions with the Mental Health Board, and move forward from there. The Chair of the Mental Health Board is with us here this morning, and I'm sure will be happy to answer any questions, Carl Knieva. Our Environmental Health Manager is sitting in for Avana Thomas, representing the Health Department staff. So if you'd like, Madam Mayor, if I see one light, if you'd like to talk about this.
Alderman Rainey has a question.
First of all, I would like to know, one, can you share with us who the two organizations are? And number two, I would like to move approval of your recommendation to set aside the $85,000 in the City Manager budget.
Second.
An answer to your question, Alderman Rainey, I heard from youth organization Umbrella, Seth Green. He's not sure that the staff that he has would make sense, but he wanted to let the council and the city know that they may be able to be helpful to us. So all he asked was, is that if we have further discussions, he'd like to be invited to a meeting to talk about that. We also heard from the healthcare group, and I believe they now go by the name Provena or Proventia, the parent company of St. Francis Hospital. They have a group within their system, not necessarily associated directly with St. Francis, but within their system that deals with these issues. Apparently, they have made some initial contacts with the Mental Health Board over time, and they see this as an area that they also may be able to help with on a contract basis. So we would, again, with Ms. Thomas's assistance, working with the Mental Health Board, likely convene all interested parties together for a meeting and come back to the council after the first of the year.
Thank you.
Did I get a second?
You did.
Yeah, you got two seconds.
Good.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the City Manager's recommendation, and seeing no further lights for discussion, I guess it's a money item, so City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem? Eight.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes.
Continuing through the answers to the questions on page 17 is a response regarding the athletic tax. Alderman Grover had asked to make sure that we were accounting for current revenues, as well as changes in the football schedule coming up. Page 18 addresses Alderman, excuse me, Mayor Tisdale's question regarding when we would be 50% funded, and Marty, in his inimitable way, gave you a five-page memo to give you two-line answer, and that is that we expect that in, based on many assumptions, which are completely outlined in the memo, for the record, that we would hope to be over 50% in the police pension fund in 2016 and the fire pension fund in 2017. So hopefully, that provides the direct answer you were looking for.
Thank you very much for burying it within the papers, Marty. Alderman Rainey.
Well, it does say that, but it also says a lot of other things, that if people are really interested, they need to read this, because it makes it very clear that, you know, while we've made several assumptions, some of which are simplified, blah, 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 and therefore not necessarily actuarially valid, I think, and that is embedded, that concept is embedded several times throughout this memo. I thought it was very creatively presented.
I don't know about doing copy.
But I...
You are.
I think that's, that's what I want to say about it.
Thank you. The word from Springfield is so typical, that nothing will happen in the veto session. But now, they're also saying that nothing may happen in the lame duck session.
Nothing will happen.
So, yes, as usual, I mean, and that's...
That's it.
Well, it's pretty consistent, though. So at any rate, I had had great hopes for the lame duck session.
Continuing on to the next item, page 21, I believe it was Alderman Rainey who had asked for more detail regarding the police and fire payouts for leave, and that information was detailed there. I think that those numbers are leveling off over time, and certainly appreciate the good work that Police Administrative Staff is doing, along with our Administrative Services Staff, to just kind of get a handle on those payments. On page 23 is the property tax levy graph that was not included in the presentation, but we had on the shelf, so that gives you a sense of where that is. The graph starts in 1982, goes through 2011. Page 24 is in response to a request from Mayor Tisdale. She asked that staff look for, I'm sorry.
Alderman Burris?
The graph, that would be great if that graph was on the city website prominently somewhere.
Okay.
And could you send this to me, if anyone else wants it? Because it's embedded in an Adobe, so it's hard to get out, but I would like to have that graph, that we can use it in other documents. I think this is an extremely important graph for people to see when we talk about taxes, and where, how much is really coming to the city, where we talk about it, but I think most residents don't fully understand that we've actually gone down in our portion of what they're paying actually comes to the city. So that'd be helpful, and thank you for this.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, it's gone down since 1982. However, however, as I mentioned when I asked for this information, it is the highest percentage of the total tax bill since, I think it's 1992, I'm getting the trouble wrong about that. So we're creeping up there. I don't know if, you know, I don't know if that means, it's got to mean that somebody else is reducing their percentage, so I don't know which district certainly isn't coming. Probably 1% to 2%.
Alderman Rainey, members of council, the case for our creep the last couple of years is the tax cap held the other districts at 2 to 3, and we had the year last year that was higher, and the year before that was higher in the non-general fund area, but it was still our tax levy. If we proceed as projected this year, they'll go up about 3%, because that's the cap, and we are going up zero. So when you see this graph, the following year will have a drop.
I think it was a great idea to ask for it, and I think we should have it every year. Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
It is going up. It is, you know, you can say it's going down, but I don't know too many people who couldn't wait until 1982. It is, it is going up since 1982.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
I don't know how difficult this would be, but I think to make the picture complete, if we could show the percentage that, for instance, the school districts, a graph of the school districts, I think that would be very helpful. I don't know whether that makes life really difficult, but I think this is just, this starts the question of, well, where does the rest of the money go? And if you could see what's been happening over time, that would be, more information is always better.
Thank you.
In your spare time.
All right, I see no more lights.
All right. Then that takes us to page 24. Mayor Tisdale had asked us to cost out the addition of some security cameras adjacent to Evanston Township High School. There is a memorandum to you from Deputy Police Chief Jamraz, which outlines four locations, Dempster Dodge, Lake and Dodge, Church and Dodge, and Lions and Dodge, the total cost of incorporating these cameras, and they would be incorporated into our existing system. So that not only is the camera, but also the technology to get the signal back to the police station, that's about $60,000, $61,000. And attached to that are, we've gone to the full costing, so that's a good number, should the council wish to move forward with that.
I asked for this in direct response to a request from Superintendent Witherspoon. Alderman Rainey?
Well, what I want to know is, first of all, why isn't there a camera at Church and Dodge? And second of all, is there some underlying controversy here, other, having nothing to do with money, having to do with philosophical issues, having to do with a camera at Church and Dodge, or Lake and Dodge, or wherever? I can't recall why we don't have one at Church and Dodge.
Alderman Holmes? Did you?
I was just going to say that I think in the past, there had been some concerns about more, if you remember, I, former Alderman Jean Baptiste, had some concerns.
But that was at Dodge and Main?
No, it was at Ashley Dodge and Lake, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and also, well, Church and Dodge as well, because one side is second and the other side is the fifth. But we, I don't think, there's no controversy now about having a camera.
Absolutely.
At least on my part, there isn't.
So he's gone, and we're moving on.
I'm not going to blame it all on Mike now, that's not what I'm trying to do, but I'm just simply saying, I think that people are very much aware that cameras would be very helpful.
That's the one thing.
Chief, did you want to add to that?
Only that I'm really glad that Alderman Holmes handled the philosophical end of the question, and it would be really bad for my business if I was to blame Judge Baptiste for anything. The cost of this is driven more by technology. We need to, part of that dollars is to put, in crude language, a repeater station out probably on the ETHS smokestack to collect the digital signals from the west side. So that's the driver in this, more than the philosophy.
If someone would like to make a motion? Alderman Rainey?
I would like to move, I think it's a very reasonable price, given the cost of cameras over time. And if there's acceptance by the community, et cetera, I would move we leave this in the budget, or if this is a purchase item ahead of the budget, however, I'm not sure.
And Alderman Rainey, if you could perhaps, in your motion, if we can find a way to do this current year, we will.
Okay.
If not, when we bring you back the final budget documents, we'll include it.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the staff report regarding the expenditures and locations for cameras in the Church and Dodge area, and if possible, if the money is available this year, that we complete the project this year, if not, we place the amount in the budget for the following year.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes.
Next, on the next page, deals with a request regarding security lighting, again, also adjacent to Evanston Township High School. There's a memorandum from Public Works Director Suzette Robinson, indicating that discussions are ongoing with ETHS staff regarding the exact locations of additional lighting. There is a CIP project that is scheduled for next year, which would have money in it for lighting. Also, we think there are opportunities for CDBG funding for lighting, so our recommendation would be to continue to move those discussions forward and to come back to the council in early January, if additional resources are needed in order to accomplish what the goals of the high school are.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Yes, I just wanted to speak to that in terms of that, the high school is requesting this now, but residents have been requesting additional lighting in that area for a long time, so it really is time that we do that, particularly if you're going east on Dodge between, I mean, east on Church between Dodge and, I want to say, Ash Florence. It's really, just really, really dark there, and we've been asking for lighting, and that, again, south side, second ward, north side, fifth ward, but we certainly would love to have additional lighting. We need to do the same thing west on Church Street as well. There are just not enough poles for the lighting. So we've upped the wattage, but it still has not done, and Parks and Forest has trimmed our trees, we've done all of that, but it's just that we need additional lighting.
Thank you.
So I would move that we...
I would move that we... I would move that we accept the city manager's recommendation, move ahead, and if we can do something this year, it would be fantastic.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the motion passes.
And finally, on page 32, the council asked for some additional follow-up information regarding sidewalk maintenance. There were various costings requested as far as the replacement of sidewalks, alternatives for the asphalt that would be used. We have some suggestions regarding using inside personnel versus contractors. We also talk about the flexibility that could be used with the 50-50 sidewalk program. Madam Mayor, I don't know if you'd like us to walk through this specifically, or if there are specific questions or recommendations you'd like to go to.
Does anyone have specific questions at this time? Alderman Rainey?
City manager, it costs $160 for a square, new concrete square. I just can't believe, when I see one of the trucks out with three or four guys off of it, with shoveling asphalt, that somehow or another, if you added up all those costs of the truck driving out, you wouldn't come up with something real close to $160. So I'm thinking, maybe we could have a two-tiered plan, but it would be required. 50-50 for those people who have a crack in their sidewalk, and they just want it refreshed and looking nice. And then, if we force a sidewalk replacement, maybe it could be 2/3 us and 1/3 the homeowner. But the asphalt patches are horrible. I think they're more dangerous than the problem they're repairing. That's, and it's not only looks, it just makes no sense. I don't know what you do in the winter when you can't replace, but...
And I think this has been an iterative process. I know I spoke earlier this morning with Alderman Burris. I think she had similar thoughts as far as using the 50-50 plan as part of that. I think what we can do is maybe come back with a very specific proposal that would address this from a sequence perspective, saying, okay, we would send out the letter, this is where it'd be 50-50, or 60-40, however that would work. I guess what the concern for this morning was, would there be a budget impact? I think that if you're willing to phase this in, perhaps let's call a six-month pilot, we can do pretty much anything that I think the council's alluding to, and then come back with data after six months, and if there's been a significant cost to us, deal with it after the six-month period. But if the council wishes to get away from the asphalt patch, we can do that, and then come back with a more specific proposed plan that no longer includes the asphalt patch.
Also, I mean, we do veer from the 50-50 when a tree root uproots a public sidewalk. We pay the whole thing. I just had a case where four or five pieces were replaced, two were 50, or three were 50-50, and two, I think, were tree roots, all in front of the same house. So we do that. It's not always 50-50.
We do that when the impact is a parkway tree, a city tree. But if the tree is actually on a homeowner's property, then it's...
Of course, I mean a parkway tree.
Alderman Holmes?
I just want to understand about the winter months, if there's, if something happens, we'd still have to use the co-pat? Is that, I mean, that's what I read, I thought.
Yes, or we'd have to wait.
Have to wait.
Yeah.
But I mean, if it's something really serious, you have to do something to keep someone from getting hurt, right?
That's correct.
And we would, again, I think, we weren't quite sure where the council was going with this. We wanted, the request was to give you some dollar amounts. I think what I'm hearing the council say is, let's try to be a little bit more creative with, you know, largely existing resources, not completely existing resources. Let's call it a six-month pilot. Let's come back to you with a very specific plan. I think we can talk about winter, and we can say that after December 1, from December 1 to April 1, May 1, we would do an intermediate step, and here are the reasons that would be done that way. We make that known to everyone involved in the process, the larger community. So if that's the wishes of the council, why don't you give us a few weeks, and we'll come back either at your December 10 meeting, or your January 14 meeting with a plan, have you adopt it by a motion, and we'll implement it that way.
That's good.
Within existing resources, we'll come back to you at mid-year if we discover that the plan is costing us more than we expected. So I think, Madam Mayor, I can take general direction on that.
All right.
And that takes us to the end of the list of the budget questions. So we have your department director team and the budget staff here, we're happy to answer any additional questions.
Anyone have any additional questions? Well, while you all are thinking of additional questions, I wanted to bring up the Illinois Municipal League membership. The Illinois Municipal League, as you may have read, has some internal problems at the moment. I think that it's very important that we have an Illinois Municipal League and lobbying in Springfield. I am concerned about what they're, about the problems that they're experiencing. I do know Scott Eisenhower, the new president of the municipal league, he has a very good reputation, and I think we should include the money in the budget, but hold on, not send our membership in right away, and see what they do to resolve their problems. Thank you, all in favor. It's in the budget anyway, but thanks. All right, do we have any questions about the budget?
Madam Mayor, what we would then propose is there's a series of ordinances regarding the tax levy. We would ask that the council introduce those ordinances. It sounds as if, if you are happy with the budget, as we have discussed it, at this point, we would recommend then that you would cancel the meeting that was been scheduled for Tuesday November 13, that you cancel the meeting that's been scheduled for Monday, November 19, and that we would bring Mr. Lyons everything back on the 26th, including the property tax levies, so you would have the, or that would come back on the 10th.
Yeah, that's just statutorily, we can't...
Okay, so we would ask then that you, because of the amount of time that's required once between introduction and adoption of the levies, that if you introduce the levies today, we would come back on December 10 with that. We would bring the budget resolutions, I believe the fee increase for water, and perhaps a couple of other miscellaneous related items to the council then, at your regular meeting on Monday, November 26, for adoption of the budget.
Alderman Rainey?
When would you schedule, city manager, the discussion regarding the intervention counselor, the crisis counselor?
As you know, Ms. Thomas has been out of the country. She'll be back next week. I'd like to bring her up to speed. I would imagine that the mental health board will be, would be kind enough to either have a subcommittee that would help work on this, perhaps over the course of November, December. My hope would be we would come back the first part of January with some recommendations.
After the budget is passed?
After the budget is passed. So the motion that was made was to put the money aside.
I know.
I think we'll be diligent. Looking at your agenda for the, then the final two meetings of the year, November 26 and December 10, you have, are going to have busy agendas on both of those dates. After those dates, things get a little easier for you, so we can commit to coming back in January with that, and hopefully have a plan that we could then implement rather soon. We were originally looking at the staff member, looking for three months before that would happen anyway, so I think even with this path, we would largely have a solution ready to go earlier than previously expected, so. So, Madam Mayor, if there is, if there's general agreement, then we'll go ahead and cancel the meetings Tuesday evening, and on Monday, the 19th, package it all up for the budget adoption on the 26th of November, and then the levy adoption on the 10th of December, and would then ask that you, this morning, introduce the four ordinances that are on the agenda.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, would you like me to introduce them?
I would very much like you to do that.
Should I do them all, and then we'll, it'd be like a consent agenda, and then we'll vote them all at once?
I think one at a time for this.
Really?
That's what's...
Or you can do them all, whatever the mayor's preference.
It's only for introduction.
All right, let's do a consent...
It would be like it was on our consent agenda.
You're an expert at consent agenda, it's Alderman Rainey, go right ahead.
Learned to read them, yes. Consideration is requested to introduce tax levy ordinance 133012, which levies the annual property tax for general fund operations, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and police and fire pension funds. That's for introduction. Ordinance 134012, the 2012 special service area number four tax levy, which levies the annual property tax for special services area four, request is for introduction. Request introduction of ordinance 135012, the 2012 Evanston Public Library tax levy, which levies the annual property tax for the Evanston Public Library. Request introduction for ordinance 2T012, the 2012 Evanston Township, I'd like to, I'll leave it on, Township Tax Levy. This levies the annual property tax for the town of Evanston, and is for introduction. Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the consent agenda passes. Would anyone like to make another motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It has to be a record, right?
Yeah, it has to.
This has to be a record.
It's before 10. We've got a minute or two.
Thank you.
Congratulations, city manager.
So this is for Mondays, we consider...
Well, you didn't hear the box of just...
Order pizza?
Wow, we can get expensive pizza, it's going to cover a heck of a lot.
Yeah, well, you just canceled a couple of meetings, you're going to save money on pizza that way. We could take some home if you'd like.